Good evening and welcome to each and every one of you. I want to thank you all for joining us. We are the Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women. We are so excited that you have chosen to spend your evening with us. I often say that life is a choice. And so we are delighted that you have chosen to spend some time with us this evening. My name is Donella Clark and I am the proud chairwoman of the MCSW. I want to recognize and thank all of my sister commissioners who are on the call this evening. I certainly want to salute and thank our wonderful MCSW staff. You will be hearing from our executive director shortly. But particularly want to recognize our chair of our program committee, Commissioner Jean Fox, and thank her for her work as well as Commissioner Meredith Tuitt, who you will also hear from later this evening. I want to thank both of those, these commissioners for their leadership, particularly in organizing this event. For those of you who this is your first time joining us for a public hearing, allow me to let you know what the MCSW does. We are a state established body charged with reviewing the status of women and girls in our great Commonwealth. And what we do is we take those recommendations to our governor, lieutenant governor, Speaker of the House, Senate President, and all of our elected officials up at the State House, working to make change and improve the quality of life for women and girls in this Commonwealth. So again, I want to thank each and every one of you for joining us this evening. We are looking forward to a very informative conversation. Please know that we are being recorded. We are also on Facebook Live this evening. We thank those of you who have provided written testimony, those of you who will be testifying this evening. I'm sure that my colleagues will be providing some additional information to share testimony with us. But my role here this evening is really again to say thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank each and every one of you for joining us for this important discussion. It is now my pleasure to introduce to some and to present to others for the first time. She's only been with us since November 1st, just a few weeks, our newly minted, appointed executive director. Don't confuse the why, for why, it is Jerece. Jerece Hildegato. She comes to us with deep experience in the nonprofit sector, having worked at the Harvard Kennedy School for Women. She served the First Lady of our great territory, Puerto Rico, has done amazing work for women and girls. And as Chairwoman, I couldn't be more delighted to have her extraordinary leadership. We at the commission are excited about what she has already started to do and what she, we know that she will do. So Jerece, welcome to your first public hearing. We are proud to have you. And I will now turn it over to you as our executive director to kick us off and to get us started. Again, thank everyone for joining.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairwoman Clark. It is my pleasure and I feel very, very honored to be among strong leaders and women who are really committed to bring up the status of women and girls and make sure that our public policy empowers and brings us to a level of equity in our society. So it's such a pleasure to be here today. We want to start with a practice that our fellow commissioners said that we want to instate. And that is I want to give you the welcome in the languages that we have in our commission. Welcome, bienvenidos. And I would like Chairwoman Jean Fox to also join us in the welcoming.
Bonsoir tout le monde. Je souhaite la bienvenue à tout le monde et tous les invités. Bonsoir.
Merci beaucoup. Please, if you can join us, Connie Chow in the welcoming as well.
Sure.
Thank you. And this is the example of what we want to do. Have Massachusetts inclusive to all women and make sure that we have equitable access to the opportunities that we all deserve. I want to thank you for joining us. As Madam Chairwoman Clark said, you could have a choice and you're here, practicing your civic engagement of telling your story, bringing us your experience. So our public policy, it's closer to the needs and the challenges that we have in our community. Thank you so much for spending this time with us. I just wanted to remind everybody that if there's a testimonial that from someone that speaks Spanish, I would be happy to translate. We also have ASL translation, our interpreters. Thank you so much for joining us. And just a quick reminder, this is a public hearing. We may have reporters with us highlighting the important issues that we want to bring. So thank you for being here with us and becoming that amplifier of the issues that we want to share. And last but certainly not least, I want to just take my hat off and say thank you. Gracias. Mel, Megan, Tate, Ellen, Anuka. Our commission would not be here today if it wasn't for your amazing effort and commitment. And I'm just honored to be part of your team. So thank you so much. And with this, I would like to present our commissioner, Ruth Bramson. Ruth?
Thank you, Jerece. I am Ruth Bramson and I've served as a commissioner representing Boston as an appointee of Governor Romney, Governor Sluci, and current Governor Charlie Baker. As you know and as you've just heard, the mission of the Mass Commission on the Status of Women is to make the voices of women and girls of the Commonwealth heard. This hearing is a perfect venue for us to do just that. However, turning voices into action requires the support of our elected officials and our partnering organizations. So I am now very proud to introduce the officials, their representatives who are with us, and our partnering organizations who have joined us today. And I want to thank them for their invaluable support. With us today, we have Nora Bent, who is the Executive Director of the Massachusetts Caucus of Women Legislators. And we have representatives of the Office of the State Representative Christine Barber, Senator Edward Markey's office, State Representative Natalie Blazer's office, and a representative from Liz Miranda's office. I would also like to recognize our wonderful Commissioner Meredith Elizabeth Hart, who is with us, and Penny Dalestall as well. Representatives from the following organizations are also part of this hearing. I'm going to list them for you. Tailored for Success, Dress for Success, Massachusetts Women of Color Coalition, Pathways for Change, the YWCA of Southeastern Massachusetts, New Hope, Budget Buddies, The Clubhouse Network, Arise for Social Justice, the Executive Director of Bentley Center for Women in Business, Lawrence Public Schools, Massachusetts Association of Women in Science, and Eastern Nazarene College. So we have represented some great many very important organizations, both within and outside of our government. And we thank you all so much for being with us tonight. With that being said, I'm going to turn it back to our Commissioner Jean Fox. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bramson, and thank you all for being here. As you heard from Chairwoman Clark and our new executive director, we are extremely excited to have you all here tonight to share with us the next steps in what's happening with us all. One of the things that I do as Chair of Program and Planning is I convene people to talk about what's the best way to reach people. And this committee has done an exceptional job of planning a really exciting hearing tonight. We're looking forward to hearing all of your testimony. We're looking forward to hearing you speak, even if you didn't submit written testimony. We think we inspire each other when we chat and we meet. I just want to let you know that we have, as sister commissions, 11 regional commissions and a number of them are here tonight. So if anyone is from the following commissions, please wave your hand and let everyone know that you're present. Excuse me, we have Berkshire County, Bristol County, Eastern Regional, Cape and the Islands, Essex County, Hampden County, Hampshire Franklin, Metro West, Plymouth County, Upper Middlesex, and finally Worcester County. It's very exciting to have our regional sisters with us for this evening's event and for many of the things we do together. A little bit of an overview, we're going to have about 45 minutes or so testimony. We have a list of people who have requested that they had, they want to testify. You will have an opportunity and our facilitators, Commissioner Tuitt and Commissioner Rosetti will tell you what that process will be. We want to hear as many voices as possible. That's definitely the goal of this evening. Your testimony is timed. We ask that you limit your remarks to two minutes. Commissioner Chow has this fancy timing machine and she will cue you when your time is elapsing and when it is over. So just watch this fancy clock, you're going to be impressed. We also have some poll questions that will populate the hearing during the hearing. And they're quick, easy questions. They also really help inform our data collection and synthesis and analysis. So we rely on the surveys for sure. But these polling questions will also help us as we generate a report that will, that will contain a lot of what we're trying to get out of this, this event. And finally, I want to let anybody who has trouble seeing the timer, let us know in the chat or otherwise that you can't see it and we will work with you on that. And with that, I'm going to pass it on to Commissioner Tuitt and Rosetti. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman Fox and Chairwoman Clark. A new executive director, Yagi Zedalgo, thank you so much. My name is Meredith Tuitt. I am a commissioner here on the MCSW and I'm appointed by the Women's Legislative Caucus. It's a pleasure co-moderating this evening with my sister Linda. And we're going to have a beautiful evening and we are excited about everyone that's already registered to testify. We look forward to those that want to add to the testimonies. Again, I live here in the city of Boston. I'm a United States Navy veteran. I love being on the Women's Commission because the change and the voices that we bring to our legislators to make impact in the Commonwealth to me is powerful. And I would like to have my co-moderator Linda introduce herself. And then we're going to jump right into this beautiful night. It's been a good day. We had good weather. Now we have an awesome, awesome night of sisterhood networking. Thank you, Linda. You're on mute.
There I go. Thanks. That's why we're a team. Welcome, everyone. My name is Linda Rosetti. As Commissioner Tuitt said, I represent the Upper Middlesex Commission. It's an honor to be here. We're thrilled to have you. I'm from the city of Winchester. And I want to just remind you that there's lots of ways to be involved tonight. We're thrilled if you've registered to testify. We will be asking some questions. We'll use the Zoom polling function. But you're welcome to populate the chat. We have a whole staff here waiting to hear how you want to communicate with us. And if you want to listen and submit things after this, we're more than happy to have that as well. So again, as everyone has already mentioned, we're delighted to have you in this conversation. It is a conversation and it allows us to then have a great conversation with our elected officials and other people in the state who are working very, very hard to make sure that we bring an equitable, rich, quality experience for the women and girls in Massachusetts. So Commissioner Tuitt, what should we do next?
Thank you, Linda. Again, just to emphasize on the fact that our hearing and our survey, that we're going to drop into the link in a few. We are asking you to make sure and we are hoping that you will respond and answer the survey. Because there are so many systematic issues that impact women across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And we're excited that we're able to focus in this hearing on women in the workforce, to focus this survey on women in the workforce and be able to pull a report out of all of this. Again, as my sister said, thank you for those that have already registered. If you have not registered, please drop testify into the chat. That way our wonderful staff would be able to get your name and populate you onto the list. And when we call on you, please put your raised hand up so everyone would know that you are the one that is speaking. We cannot pin you to the window because we have the ASL interpreters. So if we pin you, we lose the ASL for those that might be in need. Again, as my executive director stated earlier, if you want to testify and you had not already registered and you speak a second language, please also say that in the chat so that we can know if we have someone that can interpret for you now. If not, we are glad to accept any video testimony that you're willing to submit to us. We're asking for written testimonies. We're asking for video testimonies. If it's verbal, if you just want to record your voice and not your picture, we'll take that also. So we have a deadline of December 8th to get all of that in. So if you don't do it tonight, you still have time. Our staff people will monitor the chat. Also, again, Sister Connie is going to do the two-minute time limit. And if you have questions, also drop it in the chat. So I'm excited to start. And our first person for this evening, Kathleen Reardon. Kathleen, are you here? I forgot to stroll, I like to scroll through to see if they've already been registered, if they've already logged in, if they're in the room. And I didn't get to do that. So Kathleen, are you here? We'll give her two seconds. I don't see her yet. Okay. Let's see, who's next on my list? I'm going to do my next on the list and see if she's here. Okay, so, so you know what? Did I just see her? I think I just saw her name in here. Ms. Gay, Nde, Nde Gay. I think I saw you do a greetings in the chat. There you go. Yes, Ms. Gay, can you, are you ready to testify? Unmute yourself and put your raised hand up so we can see that you are speaking. I know I'm pronouncing the first name incorrectly. N-D-E-Y-E, Nde? You're here.
You know, I see Commissioner Tuitt that she's going to pass on testifying tonight, Nde. So why don't we, why don't we, why don't we keep on going? I have Elizabeth Hart next, so maybe she could go next.
I didn't see Elizabeth logged in yet. I do see that Sister Commissioner Allison Goldberg is here. Allison, can we jump to you? While we are, while we are populating, I was looking at our list to make sure that others are here. Allison?
Hi.
There you go. Can you raise your, raise your hand on the chat so everyone knows that it's you? And so I just want to say that Sister Commissioner Allison Goldberg is a Sister Commissioner here in MCSW. But tonight she's testifying as a female-owned business, female entrepreneurs. Allison, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for sharing the evening with us tonight. Women in the workforce is definitely a lot of things to a lot of different people. But I think really it's, our commonalities are that we all juggle a lot. And I think during this post-time of COVID, we get to reassess our situations and try and figure out what works. It's like, I know that there's a name for it, a nice marketing term. But I think really it's all about how we can figure out where we are and what we have to do. And so many of us have to deal with things that we discover are very important to us that maybe we knew, but now we really know. And I know that at our company, we have the opportunity to offer some flexible hours so that we can try and accommodate someone who needs to leave early, someone who needs to arrive late. Oh, my babysitter didn't show up. Oh, I'm going to see my, my daughter, son, nephew, grandchild, whatever it might be. And I know that we're the exception. We're Jelly Factory names, if anybody's looking for some great Life Factory work. We're hiring. But, but we all struggle trying to figure out what is best for us. Certainly as a business owner, but I work there. And we have to figure out how to accommodate the reckoning, right? The new reckoning past COVID. And so I know it's a lot easier for a small business like ours to pivot and to be able to react. But some of the things that this commission is working towards are for women to betterment overall and recognition of the different hats that we wear and that we are breadwinners, we are primary caregivers, we are flexible, we are inflexible as we need to be. And so the commission has so many avenues that we as residents of the Commonwealth, that we as constituents, as voters, as people with voices, that advocating for ourselves, I think, is really the best thing that we can all do for each other.
Thank you, Allison. Thank you for that. Moving forward, we have April Diaz. Are you ready to testify?
Hello, good evening. I am definitely happy to be here. This is my first time. I, I can say that I'm eager to learn a little bit more about what everybody has to share tonight. I'm not really quite sure what to say much more than to echo what my sister said, that work-life balance has been very important. I work at a small, private liberal arts college here in Quincy called Eastern Nazarene College. And I know that the college, I'm happy to be there because they recognize the importance of families. They recognize the important role of women in families. And one of the things that I've, I've been an educator for over 20 years. And it certainly is a challenge to find the time to do everything else in addition to being an educator. So I'm happy to be in an organization that respects that, that gives me the flexibility and the time to do that. And I think that we need to continue to help women find those spaces and places where they can find that work-life balance that they desperately need. Because we, we have all of those, all of those multiple roles, right? All of those multiple hats in our families. And so as a professional who is already over almost 50, it took me a long time to figure out that my health and well-being is very important. And it is important to the job that I do and to my family and to my extended family. So that's probably my number one contribution this evening.
Thank you, April. So that, thank you all. Testimonies are all so needed. We, we can only do the work when we have our sister voices brought to the table. And we thank you for that testimony. Again, I just want to acknowledge to all the women, all the attendees, when we call on you to speak within the dropdown of your chat window or your participants' window, if you look in there, you'll have your little raised hand, your little yes, your little emoji, smiley face. Can you please put your hand up so everyone could know who is speaking when you're speaking? Because we are, we cannot pin you to the window. Go ahead, Linda.
Commissioner, I wonder if it might be a great idea to maybe start with one of our questions, right? There's been two terrific testimonies so far. You know, Ms. Diaz and Allison did a great job. But I wonder just to get everyone involved, if we might want to start with a question. What do you think?
Yes, let's throw in the first polling question. It is a polling question you get to answer. It gives us an instant answer, stats on what you said. So we are going to drop in our first polling question. And I, and I know you guys are going to love this, right? We want to know, how has your job status changed during the COVID period? So the poll is going to ask, how has your job status changed as a direct result of COVID-19? Go ahead and do your answer. Give it back to us. And I, this is what I love so much about virtual hearings. I really like the in-person hearings because we get the network and meet each other and talk to each other. But when we do the virtual hearings, we get this instant question and stats right back, right? And Mel and Meg are going to give us our answers when everybody's done. Let's see what we've done. Are we ready, ladies? What do you think? Has everyone answered?
I think we need a drum roll, Commissioner.
Yeah, I know. I, we forgot to get one. We did, you know, I, I had this real nice little music chime the last time, you know? But oh no, you know why we didn't do it? Because last time, some people said it was very distracting. We don't, and we want to make everybody comfortable in the hearing. So yeah, we can't do the drum roll. Okay, Mel, Meg, can we drop in our polling question and answers? Wow, look at that. 64% said that their job status had changed as a direct result of COVID-19. That is something that we really thank you ladies for because that's, that's powerful information for us to know right at the moment. I understand that we have a sister that wanted to testify and we know how childcare issues are. So Gina Rodriguez, we, we understand, we get it. We know that you have to go and take care of the babies before the, by the time your childcare cuts out because we know it costs a little extra every time you go past that number. So Gina Rodriguez, are you ready? Where are you? Don't forget to click on your hand so we can see you.
I'm here. Let me just click on the hand. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm very honored to be here of these, as part of these important conversations, first of all. You know, it has been challenging during the pandemic to have to juggle all different sorts of roles that we had separated in our previous life, right? Like, you know, getting the car, disconnect from home, get to work, do your work, come back home. But it's now all mixed. And that has been a challenge to even perform well at work, right? Because how do you take care? I'm trying to do work. You might say, you know, after, after they go to sleep, but then at the end, they actually put you to sleep. So it's, it's, I, I, I feel fortunate that I'm able to actually work from home and that I have not been affected by it. And I've had these reflection throughout this pandemic of like, I do want this type of separation. But at the same time, I have also been able to enjoy my little ones a little bit more. I'm fortunate enough to be part of an organization, Work for Foundation Medicine, that has been very flexible with, with parents, especially mothers. They have their own group of people in an organi, like an internal organization within the company called Uplift, unleashing the potential of leadership and impact of female talent. And it's been a forum for mothers and for women to really help each other to think about all the issues that are facing us. So, you know, I feel fortunate to, to work for these, you know, type of organization that are, that is really thinking about the status of women and how to really unleash all the potential and, and help them through the hurdles that they might have. So thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Thank you. Thank you, Gina. Thank you. And I'm loving Connie's little time thing. It, it's, it's working so well. Last time we had these big little red numbers, you know? I don't know if you remember those, Linda. We had, it was just blinking away at everyone. And, you know, yeah, it was a trigger. So now we have this very nice structured way of letting everyone know that their time is running. All right. So I thank you, Gina. Thank you for that. And thank you for taking the time because it is always a hard thing to do, especially when childcare is involved, right? We are now going to move to our next, but I just want to put out a message here. I see Amanda from Pathways to Change is on with us. Amanda, I hope you dropped into the chat that you're going to testify. Because that would be really awesome to hear from you because you guys do some really awesome work. All right? Okay, so who's ready? Dr. T, are you ready? Dr. Tanisha Pinkney, she's one of our commissioners here also out of the Worcester Regional. And I think what she's going to bring to the table in her testimony, because I know her story, is going to be something that all of us need to hear.
Hello, everyone. I am bringing you greetings as the Chair of the Worcester County Commission on the Status of Women. Also Board of Directors of the National Alliance on Mental Illness for Massachusetts. And also President of the Board of Trustees of the Worcester Recovery Center and Hospital. But today I'm speaking on my own behalf as a mother, as a woman, as a woman of color, as a black woman and all of that. I wanted to talk about kind of how COVID has, especially in the workplace, has affected me over this year and some of the things that I've seen as a professor. I work with a lot of different students. And a lot of the things that I've heard from our women and girls that are students is the mental health aspect of it. The anxiety, the losing their jobs, the trying to take care of school and work and kids and parents, you know, having, you, you have 19 and 20-year-olds sometimes trying to take care of children, parents and grandparents, all while dealing with grief and loss and career uncertainty. And it makes it even harder as a professor to tackle these things because you want to help. On my personal behalf, I've had to close my business this year. I've had to, well, close my office. I've had to, some of may know I lost my place in a fire, but I have a son. I'm also a single mother with the, with the son that has a mental illness. And trying to work, trying to get reduced hours, being underemployed and dealing with all the stresses of loss and everything. And meanwhile, trying to deal with his mental health concerns. And he ended up on the street because it's hard to juggle it all. So this is very important that we are, we are looking at this because our real life issues are exacerbated by the things that we are and are not dealing with in the workplace. Thank you.
Thank you, sister. Thank you. Thank you for that. And again, everything we hear tonight is, is, is something that all women, all women, let's say it again, all women experience and go through, and sometimes we don't speak on it. So we are so thankful for everyone that's coming tonight to share with us their testimony and their thoughts. Okay, so let's see. Carrie, is Carrie Pascarello here? Carrie, are you ready? Ladies, did you see Carrie in the, in the participation list? I don't, no, I don't see her. Okay, so yep, there she is. Carrie, you're here. So Carrie, can you go ahead and you can start with your testimony and, and raise your hand so we'll see where you're at? There you go. All right, I see you now. Okay.
Ready to go?
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. So thank you so much. Hello, I'm Carrie Pascarello, founder of Global Secure Resources, and I'm a victim advocate focused on safety. And I'm here tonight to bring awareness to student safety. I've testified before to the MCSW on the bill titled "An Act Protecting Students Abroad." And I wanted to thank Senator Sal DiDomenico and his support for this bill to help protect students. And it covers a number of things. It covers prioritizing health, safety, security in program development, conduct risk assessments for students going overseas, maintain written emergency plans and protocols, establish statistical reporting of all deaths, assaults and injuries while participating in school-sponsored study abroad. And to add transparency by making available all these plans and protocols and statistics for review by parents and students when needed. So I just wanted to share that once again with this group, how important it is to take good care of our students as they travel abroad. In addition to that, I just wanted to share in support of the UN Sustainable Development Goals, there's a new campaign. It's hashtag Be the Beacon. Be the Beacon. And it's an initiative to really activate citizens, private companies, NGOs, civil agencies and government agencies to commit to working together to end gender violence, gender-based violence in public and private spaces, workplaces, homes. And this is all in support of the UN Day of the Eradication of Violence Against Women. And this starts on November 25th. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. And I will send over the overview of this campaign to the MCSW. So thank you so much for allowing me to share tonight.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you for that. We, we remember you from the last time you testified and we will pass that on. One of the things that I, I have to say, the testimony is, is, is always a powerful thing to bring your voice to the table. But as this is about workforce and so on, we, we'll have to look at how we can incorporate that into our, our study and our report that we are doing. So as we're moving along, it's time for us to drop in another poll question. And then we're going to go to the next. What do you, Sister Linda, are you ready for the next poll question?
I think so. You know, since we've heard so much about, you know, children and family, I think that that's, that's the place to go next.
Thank you so much. Your employer accommodates your child and family care needs. Is true and false, true or false? Go ahead, answer that and let us know what you think. Does your employer accommodate your childcare needs? This is going to be really interesting to see how this comes back, especially post-COVID. Pre-COVID, we had workforces and we have corporations and everyone that was trying to do a little something different with childcare. And then we got slammed with 2020, right? So here it is, post-COVID, coming out of all that we have been through in 2020. Let's see what our answers are with childcare in your corporation, your organization, all of that. Are we ready, Mel, Meg?
Commissioner, too, and I think you're optimistic. I don't know, pre-COVID, I'm not sure we were great at this.
Look at that. Still, 53%, 53% says no, their employer does not accommodate child and family care needs. So that tells us that we still have a long way to go when it comes to getting corporations to understand that childcare needs are so important. And not just for women in the workforce, but men in the workforce. We have, we have fathers out there that if they had the ability to be able to take their child to a childcare facility right in their, their building, it would be such a help for family stabilization. It's so important with childcare. Well, alrighty then. So we are moving on to our next person to testify. And it's another Sister Commissioner. And this Sister Commissioner works in the, the legal field. She's another one of our Legal E-Zs here. And she is also within the LGBTQ community. So Sister Rebecca, where are you? Rebecca Back.
Hi, everybody. Ooh, everyone's frozen. My internet, my internet is terrible. Can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you now.
Okay, I'm sorry that I had to turn off my video. I've been doing this sometimes lately because working from home is fun. I'm home now. Thank you for giving me this time. And I want to share that I am coming from a very privileged place. But just as the pandemic started, I had just began a new job and I actually got laid off and it was very terrifying. I had never expected that. And I luckily ended up bouncing to a new law firm. It's wonderful and supportive and we have a great hybrid work that
Rebecca. Rebecca.
But
Can you hear us, Rebecca?
And I asked to testify is that I take the commuter rail in and you can skip me.
There you go.
You can hear me now?
Yeah, whatever you did, you, you are no longer Darth Vader.
Oh, no. Okay. Well, what I was trying to say is that I understand that we just passed an infrastructure bill in Congress and I don't know how that will trickle down to us here in Massachusetts. But I'm trying to manage my kids, my family, my demanding job, which I do love. And I spent an hour today sitting on the commuter rail platform waiting for the train to come. And we need to make it possible for people to get to work. I know in eastern Massachusetts, we have so much more access to public transit. And in western Mass and central Mass, it's even harder to get around. But we need to make it possible, not only for people to have childcare so they can go to work, but also so that they have transportation, public transportation and other options to get to the jobs that we are also lucky to get and hold. So I just wanted to share that additional perspective that I'm hoping that in Massachusetts, we can focus on improving our transportation systems that I know affects nearly all of us. Thank you so much for making this.
Thank you. Thank you for that testimony. And thank you for that brief visit to Star Wars with Darth, with Darth Vader. It was, it was phenomenal. Haven't seen that movie in a long time. All right, ladies, I'm sorry. We have to keep the jov, we have to keep the smiles. Look at all those beautiful faces. Yes. So Linda, remember we were talking and we were talking about, you know, the different things that are impacting women in the workforce. And it was, it was a conversation, something you were thinking about adding to our poll question, but we couldn't add it, right? And because we didn't want to overwhelm everybody with the poll questions, right? So I think this is a perfect time just to kind of like get everybody, and we're going to ask a question. Sister Linda's going to ask a question. We just want you to wave your hand if you support or it has impacted you in a way. If you did it, don't move your hand. We just want you to wave your hand if it did impact because that kind of gives us an idea of if this is something that we need to focus in on. And, and, all right, you ready, Linda?
Yeah, yeah. So we were talking, everyone, at one of our prep meetings about workforce readiness, right? This notion of women in the workforce, we bump into when the management staff around us aren't ready to do their jobs. Or when, you know, or when people decide that in order to pay for the flexibility or the testing for COVID, they decide not to fill a position very quickly. And so our question really was, you know, in your workplace, would you say that investments are being made in readiness to, to have everyone be effective? Yes or no? Our fear is, the question is no, a big no. But we'd love to hear what you think.
So the yeses, yes, that your, your workforce is doing something. No is no hand. Right? All right. Oh. Oh, wow. So that tells us we have a long way to go, huh, Linda?
Well, you know, it's like this, you know, I'm seeing this kind of this scaffolding that workforces aren't doing, right? We're, we're not putting investment into, you know, childcare. We're not putting investment into workforce flexibility. We're not putting investment into readiness, right? Companies are doing everything they can to maintain their bottom line, but they're making it up on the backs of awesome workers, particularly women, not only in our state but all across the nation. So it's a really very interesting time, but I think it's probably time to get to another testimony, right? We have, we have a couple of people queued up and ready to go. I think we have Joanne Kamens, which might be a great person to have next.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for inviting me to speak. So I'm speaking in two roles. I'm the founder of our local chapter of the Association for Women in Science, the Massachusetts chapter, largest chapter in the country. And when I speak to that, I want to say we have a lot of women in our state that are working in the life sciences and in STEM fields. And women in STEM and STEAM and medicine have been terribly adversely affected by the pandemic. Because science is moving so fast and we know how fast science moved to save us during this crisis. But because science is moving fast, when you have to take a step away from the work for any amount of time, your career is immensely derailed. And so what we're seeing in the chapter and what we're seeing with women in STEM that I'm talking to through a number of different forums is that, you know, as always, women have to take the step back to care for their families, their lives, all the kind of caregiving. Parents, children, all of the caregiving. And when they take that step back, they're taking a much bigger hit. And we were making some progress and this state is a, with all of the universities, women in the, in the lab, women in, in all of the universities here and all of the pharma and biotech. In particular, those are not jobs that can be done at home. They cannot be done remote when you are working in a manufacturing or at the bench or doing hands-on science. And so I would say women in our state are going to be overly affected by this factor of the pandemic. And will be really set us back for many years of progress that we were finally making. So we really need to see employers doing shared work arrangements, flexible work, part-time work. We need to see job sharing. We have to see employers encourage the universities and employers to change their attitude to allow everybody to continue working. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for that. We're going to move right along to Danielle Pascal, Pascadlo. Danielle, say, pronounce the last name, baby.
Pascadlo, yeah. Thank you. I know it's married into that one. It's a beast. So, so thank you for inviting, for hosting this conversation tonight. It's great to be here. So I am Danielle Pascadlo and I am speaking as the Executive Director of Budget Buddies, a nonprofit that is focused on the financial empowerment of women and girls in our community who are living on low incomes. And so when we think about the issues that women are facing in the workplace, we really feel strongly that the inequitable gender and racial pay needs to be on the top of the list of issues that are being addressed. Gender and racial pay equity is a critical part of ensuring the financial stability of women in the financial wellness programs that we run. And we're working really hard to ensure that women have the knowledge and tools, resources and support and confidence to feel empowered and in control of their financial futures. But that individual empowerment and knowledge can only do so much when there are so so many systemic barriers that prevent women, especially the women of color, that we primarily serve in our programs for advancing economically. And we just cannot continue to expect women to budget their way out of poverty while ignoring those external hurdles that prevent economic stability. And inequitable pay prevents women from being able to save and create that financial safety net that's so critical to being able to weather financial emergencies like the severe loss of income that we just saw during COVID. So at Budget Buddies, you know, we see that lack of a financial cushion push women into poverty far too often. And addressing the pay gap in workplaces is the best way to advance the financial independence and economic security for women and their families. I also want to highlight though that there are many barriers that exist for women that prevent them from even entering the workplace in the first place. Specifically, the cultural effects that we see often forcing women to get turned down jobs or more pay or more hours because of the benefits that they would lose. And when they run their, their budgets with our coaches, it doesn't make financial sense. So thank you again for, for hosting us tonight, for all you do for women and girls in the Commonwealth. And I deeply appreciate the opportunity to be able to share and elevate the voices of the women in our um, the women in our financial health programs. So thank you.
Thank you. A, a enormous testimony. We really appreciate that perspective and it's front and center um, to where we are. Uh, my sister commissioner looks like she might be frozen there. I, I don't know. I think she is and that would be a tragedy, right? I here she is, she's back.
That was the strangest thing that just happened to me. All I was seeing was all your names in black squares. And only my video. I have never experienced that before. I guess somebody was trying to send me a message that someone in here wants to testify and I'm not acknowledging them. So whoever you are, please drop your name in the chat because we're ready to hear you. Uh, what they would say, come, come to us, come to us and let us know what you want to talk about. But right now, while you're thinking, we're going to drop in another poll question, right? And the next poll question is really going to be something that I think you guys um are going to enjoy. Um, it, it's asking, have you seen a increase, a living increase relative to what you are being paid in the light of the recent inflation? So um, have you seen the cost of living increase relative to what you're being paid in light of recent inflation? Right? So before COVID, you were making twenty-five cents. During COVID and you were quarantined, then they were looking for you to keep your job. They gave you twenty-eight cents. Post-COVID, have you seen an increase? Is it better for you now than it was before or during? How, how, how has it changed? How has it changed?
Yeah, you know, Commissioner, Commissioner Tewitt, you know, I think we're on that one. We're really trying to see um if the cost of living, so that'd be great if somebody gave him twenty-eight cents, but the challenge is, is the cereal now is three dollars. So it really does almost nothing uh, that extra three cents. So uh, this one's going to be really interesting.
Yes, yes. So were you able to buy a cup of soup or a bowl of soup? But yeah.
Coming and coming on the heels of the testimony from the Best Buddies organization, it's a really powerful polling question because this is uh, the economic implications of this are far reaching. And they're affecting every household. So I'll be so curious as to this poll.
Yes. All right, ladies, are we ready? Mel, Meg, how did that poll question come out? Wow, sixty-five percent. Wow. Okay.
Good. Well, we've seen almost all of our poll questions, at least two-thirds have been in the area we've been concerned of. You know, whether it's been childcare or um, or inflation, you know, it's really these, these issues are substantial. And certainly in the, in the people who are attending tonight, we're seeing a real consistency there, Commissioner.
Yeah, and you, and you know, and thank you Chitia for that. Uh, milk prices went up. Um, so I just want to say, don't, don't laugh because this is something I've been asking every store that I've been in. Have you noticed that you can go and get a pack of chicken drumsticks at a dollar ninety-nine a pound, but chicken wings at four sixty-nine a pound? Is it not the same chicken? What, 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 what happens that the drumstick is half the price of the wing? You know, the increase pre-COVID to post-COVID on the chicken alone, not even the egg and everything else, but that wing of the chicken.
Right.
What happened? You know, um, so, so we have to think about things like that. I had to use the chicken because the gas gets on my nerves. But the chicken was important because we have to feed. We have food insecurities. And, and, and we can't go out and buy milk, eggs, chicken wings without having to spend so much money, right? So um, I want to say um, Michelle Keith is our next testimony. So we're gonna, um, uh, Michelle is also a commissioner from the Bristol County region. And we want to um, invite Michelle to come on and do her, her testimony.
Thank you, Mary. I appreciate that greatly. I'm hoping that maybe COVID can, well, post-COVID can address a situation that has a problem for women for a long time. Um, women will often leave their jobs for childcare issues or for elder care issues. And in doing that, employers will say, well, you're not quite as committed to the job as what you should be. And why should we hire you? Because if something happens with your family, you're going to leave us. Why should we invest with you? You're a carer. You take care of things. You're the fixer. That we don't want you to be the fixer for your family. We want you to be committed and be the fixer for us. And then you've got a gap in your resume. And people always ask, and I've always wondered about this because sometimes people have gaps in their resume because they had cancer or they had some other health issue. What about mental health issues? And then an employer is asking you, why is the gap there? And you know, where's your privacy? Why can't you say, well, I had a gap and I had to attend to thi- to things without that being held against you? That is a serious problem. And I think it's just crazy that we, we're in this world where you cannot have a gap, you know what I'm saying, in your paid employment. You know, that's not the way life is. So I, I think this is the perfect opportunity for the legislature to establish an office for reemployment for people who, for moms, for people. You know how many lawyers, female lawyers were educated, became an attorney, practiced, had children, left the workforce and then never went back into the workforce because they weren't looked at as seriously committed to their careers? You know, they took two years off. They can't get re-employed. So I, I think that this would be a great opportunity to say, okay, we have all these women who left the workforce because of COVID to hold everything together. Let's, and, and it's really important to help new students and new people coming out of school. But let's focus on the people who've already paid their dues in school, who have worked in the workforce and can't get a job because they've been out of the workforce. So you know, I, I would, I would really seriously love to see the legislature set some funds aside and start to focus on these folks who, you know, left to take care of others and want to get back into the workforce and can't. Because you know, it's, is a negative.
Thank you. Thanks, Michelle. Thank you for that. Thank you. Now listen, so Michelle has really touched on something. Not being able to get back into the workforce, not being able to get back into your job. But let's talk about the vaccine mandate. Let's talk about, were you subjected to a vaccine mandate at your job that might invented you? Right? So let's, let's do the poll question. Were you subjected to a vaccine mandate at your job? Did you comply? Did you not comply? Did you receive an exemption? You know, all of that. Or did you go out and buy yourself one of those false vaccine cards and, and, and turn that in? Also, that's a joke, y'all. Just a joke.
We need a little, we need a little humor, right? But testimony is a good thing. A little humor is just fine, Commissioner.
Yeah, got it.
Got it. Thursday, uh, for Thursday evening, you know, we need a little levity. These are heavy issues. These are heavy issues. Underemployment, derailers, pay equity. These are, these are not easy. I'm really excited that people are willing to kind of put these issues forward at the end of what I know is a very long day.
Thank you, thank you. How is, how are the numbers looking, Mel, Meg? Wow, sixty-five percent compa- complied. Um, zero percent, zero percent, and thirty-five percent did not have a mandate. Okay, so let me say um, those thirty-five percent who do not work for the federal government, because federal government has a mandate. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that my daughter who works for the feds, um, she was procrastinating about taking the test. When she decided that she was gonna go and take the test, she found out she was pregnant. She decided that she didn't want to do the vaccine while she was pregnant. Then the federal government came down with the mandate. And so the mandate came down, she's due in January. And they said you had to be done by November fifteenth. Because she was a contracted employee, she had to be done by October fifteenth. Otherwise she didn't have a job. So, and she has extreme allergies. She went to her doctor at Brigham and Women and said, okay, I need to get this shot. They set her up. She explained to them that she had a coworker who took the um, Midora and went into anaphylactic shock both times and her coworker and her have the same um, allergies. And could she take the Pfizer? And Brigham Women says, no, we only carry the Midora.
Oh.
So we had to find a second location where she would be able to go. So that's something I want to ask you ladies because I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at, did you go to a facility to get your vaccine and was told that they only carried one? No? Oh, wow. Look at that. See, a lot of the hospitals made a decision on carrying one. So some of them carried the Moderna, some of them carried the Pfizer. Um, so it was very interesting to know that. And I learned that just because of my daughter and this mandate. You know, so um, I just wanted to share that out there. Again, I want to um, thank everyone that um, that uh, uh, put in to sign up to testify. Uh, so far we've gone through nine really awesome testimonies. I'm looking to see uh, Meg, any of the others that registered out of the other twelve, are they here yet? I see Meg, Meg glancing and looking. Um, I don't see a head nod yet, but I'm, I'm, I'm still, I see one of my sister commissioners on here and I'd really love if I can ask Mary Ann. Mary Ann works in so many different um, avenues uh, within the workforce that I would really love if she would give us a little something. Mary Ann, can you kind of give us a little bit of what you've been seeing in, within your field in the workforce? Okay, so I'm losing Mary Ann. She didn't hear me. So how about Stephanie? Stephanie, are you on here? I know Stephanie was, oh, Stephanie's here. Stephanie Taylor, who's another one of our Bristol County um uh, regional commissioners. Um, Stephanie can, are you ready to give us a little something? No. Oh, you're, you're muted, baby. You're muted. Turn off your, turn off your mic. Because you know what? I was hoping you would jump in and talk about the change um, within the workforce when it comes to um the dispensaries and how the, the workforce has opened up on that side of the, 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 that side of the
Um, interesting. I'm on now.
There you go.
I'm on the phone, so excuse me. Um, insofar as the dispensaries, um, they did see a decline in the beginning of COVID. When um, when the governor first put the mandate down, their recreational sales were cut. So that cut um, the workforce in the dispensaries. But when uh, the COVID ban got lifted, the dispensaries are all hiring now. I think that the biggest barrier within the dispensaries is the fact that you have to have a clean um, clean record um, in order to work there. Uh, my concern with that is that those are mostly entry-level positions that are paying um, just slightly above minimum wage, but you do have to have a clean record. So I'd like to see some legislation go through that, you know, a lot of people that don't have clean records can get these positions. Everywhere um, all, all the dispensaries are hiring. There's a lot of open positions and I believe that's a barrier to that.
Thank you, thank you.
You know, Commissioner, I wonder if we might ask a, a slightly different question, which is, you know, we've heard about derailers tonight. We heard about people exiting the workforce and not being able to get back in. I wonder if this is something that everyone on the call might be able to weigh in on, which is if you think about the workforce and either your experience or experiences of friends, neighbors, family members, what derailers are people hitting now? Now that they're trying to really, really engage and, and, and you know, provide for their families, you know, where are they bumping into things? I, I'd be really curious. You okay if we fool around with that for a few minutes, Commissioner?
Oh, yeah. No worries on that because I, I heard a lot. And I, I wish some of the young sisters that were telling me stuff had um, came in tonight like they said they would, so we can hear about them, you know.
Anyone, 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 if you want to raise your hand or put a comment in the chat, we'd love to hear more about this because this is a, a serious issue.
Did you, any of the sisters on here, did you have problems because you were ready to go back to work, but your childcare facility had limited numbers and, and you were outside of the numbers? Um, did you, um, were you ready to go back to work? But your job, your company, your corporation was not um, COVID-ready and prepared for you to come back to work. Did you get furloughed? Did you get furloughed and was waiting for your furlough to be lifted and your company went out of business? Any of those things? Anybody?
Yeah, so, so until May, I was the um, head of a small biotech called Aggie and about a hundred people. And um, people were derailed by every possible type of situation. Um, you know, uh, where they lived, uh, ability to, to um, get childcare at all, not even spaces. I mean, there was no childcare. Um, how do you work the day when you're, have three children in your lap? Um, and maybe they had grandparents to help, but they weren't health, they were too afraid of their health to have their parents, you know, visiting with them. Um, you know, not just children, but partners, people who had parents in nursing homes who they couldn't see and were trying to help their care um, while they were in nursing homes. So all of these things were derailers. Um, uh, uh, we, we were lucky. We got a PPP loan and did not have to. Um, we did some short furloughs, but we didn't have to let anyone go. And um, but I know that that was widespread and, and just not at a particular location. But the, the challenges of um, family care and care for men and women were, were hugely derailing for many people.
And to win, I, to win, are they persistent? Are many of those that you mentioned, do they still persist? I mean, we're, we're not at the end of this. It continues. I just wonder if that
Yeah, it absolutely continues because I think, you know, daycare is very uh, tentative now. If your child has a slight cold, they're sent home and all of a sudden you thought you had a day of work and now you don't have a day of work. Um, and so I, I have a son and a daughter-in-law who has a baby at home that are, that was born in December and they're, they're having the same situation. Now they're lucky they can work most of their work remote, but many people are not in that situation. Their work is not remote. And so um, that, that it continues to be a problem. This, this is not over as far as that aspect. In fact, some people, the daycare's closed, many of them have fewer spots. And so I know people who had a spot at the daycare that couldn't get a spot for the sibling. Um, you know, and, and so, you know, tho- those are, those are problems are continuing to happen. Thanks for letting
Thank you, thank you. And I, I see other hands, Commissioner. I wonder if we could, would you mind if we go to some of the other folks?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Uh, Rebecca, I see is, is trying to get a moment in.
Thanks. I just wanted to piggyback. First of all, of course I have my children and my dog all here. Um, and yeah, Neely, you can come say hi. Um, I know that it, here's near us have shorter hours, so it's still harder to get your workday in. And like I was saying, the train is not back to the normal schedule. So I think just every, parents are feeling squeezed from all sides to get their work in now that workplaces are trying to go back to normal. But everything else really hasn't. I had an experience of getting into work after a twenty-minute wait on the commuter rail platform, taking the train in and getting a call from the nurse on Monday to come right back home, take the train, pick up my daughter and take her for a PCR test. She's right over there. She's negative, thank goodness. But you know, that did derail my whole day and that is something that we're all still facing. It's not back to normal yet. We're all still uh, having a lot more on our plates because of this COVID situation.
No question. Thank you. And, and anyone else on this derail, or in Commissioner Tewitt outlined a lot of um, specifics about this. Anyone else have something to add to this?
Okay, so how about, let's talk about how have, in the workforce, again, it, it, it seems we jumped back to the childcare and the healthcare and the mental health, um, uh, the depression coming out of the COVID, the, have you gone? I know so many people that are going to counseling and, and trying to get coverage through um, uh, through their jobs and so on for their counseling and their mental health. And that's been a, a hurdle that they're, they're trying to jump through. Or um, how about school systems that opened back up? The young people are in school and then had a COVID scare. We had a school here in the city of Boston that had to close down because they had over twenty-five positive cases in an elementary, a K to eight school. You know, anything like that in your, in your, that's impacted your work? No? Okay. How about again, see? No? Okay. How about, uh, again, senior caregivers, again, like, uh, Sister Linda was talking about, and, um, Miss, um, I'm sorry, uh, the couple other people were mentioning about care for your seniors. Um, those that were in dementia facilities or healthcare facilities that you couldn't visit, that you couldn't, and when you finally did get to visit them, it was within, uh, like an hour and outside, and, you know, and you're the one that's taking care and responsible for their, their care decisions. Was that something that impacted you? Okay, wow.
I could speak to that really quickly, if that's okay, the, the caregiver. Hi, everyone, I'm Tasha, brand new, but as close as I am with my grandmother, who was ninety-eight, and my parents are both eighty. And so, um, that was a challenge in trying to maneuver work. Um, my grandmother was one of the unfortunate to pass when the, um, you know, when the COVID first outbreak, like the, it had the outbreak, and the senior homes took it the hardest first. And so she was one of those that passed away when the entire senior home developed COVID. Um, and so that was really difficult, and having parents that are eighty-two, and my mom has multiple melanoma. So being able to navigate me supporting two parents, one with cancer, during COVID, can't get to the back of the ER room, navigating a work schedule in a passing grandmother who I was not able to see because the EMTs wouldn't allow you to see the body. Um, and so it was very, very challenging, uh, during that time. So my heart goes out to anyone who has had to navigate, um, situations such as that.
Natasha, thank you so much for your perspective. Uh, and we're, we're sorry for your loss and for just the rich experience that you share. Um, I, I also know Connie had something she wanted to add in on this, so do you want to go next, Connie?
Yo, camera. Hi, everyone. Um, thanks for all your testimony. I just, uh, I'm an ed- teacher educator, and so, you know, I have a lot of students who are actually, you know, teaching in the classroom right now. And as we know, the teaching profession is, uh, very gendered, and so a lot of, you know, women are in those positions. And, and there are two primary issues. One is that, uh, because of the shortage of teachers, uh, because of this attrition over COVID, um, and the lack of childcare, a lot of the same issues that we have talked about before, uh, there's a shortage, and therefore, teachers, um, as well as other folks who are working in schools are highly stressed. On the other hand, right, then they're not, they, they may think that they're stressed and they need to do their work, but in fact, they're actually, uh, suffering from a lot of mental health, um, uh, issues. So that are not taken care of, because there are not enough counselors, even with the ability to, uh, do some of the counseling, uh, through, through digital means. The second, um, is that, uh, unfortunately, right, because of COVID, when we first went to, uh, remote learning, um, as hard as it is for, uh, for working parents, um, we have not, as a society and in this state, made the provisions, right, that allow us to think differently about how education can occur, to allow both students as well as t- as teachers, who may actually need to take some time off because of, you know, their, um, their own health, et cetera, um, to be able to actually, uh, engage in education in a different way. And so one of the things for us to think about is, you know, both from the Department of Education point of view and the state, state, I just, just point of view, think carefully about, you know, how we can really center uh, our, both our students and our workers and educators, um, again, predominantly who are women in, um, in this situation.
Thank you, Sister Commissioner. Thank you so much for that. Um, can I ask Tate or Meg to drop the survey into the chat window? Um, I'm gonna ask everyone to please capture the survey, so you're able to share it out. It's gonna, we're gonna drop it in, and it is in six different languages. So if you can capture all of them to share with your networks, that would be, um, very, very, very much appreciated by the MCSW. Again, um, I want to thank everyone that has testified so far. Um, did we miss anyone? Is there anyone else that we can call on before I turn it over to Chairwoman Fox?
Commissioner Marissa Blaisdale has her hand up.
She's, okay, I didn't see her hand, I'm sorry. Uh, Commissioner Penny, uh, Marissa, there you go. Penny, um, it's all you now. Can't hear you. You're unmuted, but I can't hear you. Check on your audio.
Right.
Your audio is connected.
You know, Commissioner Tuitt, maybe, maybe, uh, we should ask her to, um, offer her testimony in another way.
Yeah, um, all right, so put it, can you put it in the chat?
We also have Marsha Jackson with her hand up.
Okay, and Commissioner Jackson, um, Marsha, we'll let you go while, um, Kenny is, um, typing into the chat. And Marsha is another, um, regional commissioner with us also, thank you.
Yeah, I am, um, I'm actually the chair in, uh, Franklin Hampshire County. Um, I just, um, I, I don't have any solutions, or I just want to pipe up and say that it is very, very valuable for us to be sharing our own lived experiences, but we're not really talking much about, um, I'm being ironic here, the women who didn't lose their jobs during the pandemic, who are working as housekeepers, working as nurses, aides, as CNAs, um, and have to rely on informal childcare, because they certainly don't make enough money to pay for childcare, um, and who have risked their lives, many times gotten sick. Um, but the pandemic issues for them are very, very different than what they are for us. And, um, so I just wanted to mention that. And I don't mean it as criticism, I'm just piping up that, you know, that, that those folks exist very differently from us.
And, and Commissioner Jackson, I really appreciate that, because it, it brings to light that there are lots of communities that we may not be hearing from this evening. And I, I do want to honor the people on our, on our call this evening who may not be care providers, right? They may be at a point in their lives where they, they don't have children or, or elder people that they have to care for. Um, you know, I, I wonder if, if we haven't heard from any of those on the call this evening. If somebody wants to put a perspective in that's outside of those boundaries, we, we are, of course, really open and really want to hear, um, from that experience as well.
Thank you, thank you for that, Sister Linda. If you guys don't mind, can I try to, uh, tell Penny, look where your microphone is, see down at the bottom where your microphone is, see the little arrow? Click on that arrow and see what it says to you. It'll tell you if you are connected to your computer audio or if it's gonna, if it'll ask you if you wanted to switch to your phone. See those, those areas there? That is, um, the area that, um, you have to look, okay?
But Commissioner Tuitt, Penny added a wonderful chat, right, that, you know, don't delay medical care, right? Um, uh, you know, your preventative, uh, uh, medical requirements, mammograms, what have you. Um, so important and, and, um, you know, uh, I don't know the statistics off the top of my head, but they have been down substantially during the pandemic, and it puts at risk, um, uh, women and, and all sorts of people who are, um, challenged with chronic illness as well, that may not be top of mind as we're trying to address, that, you know, the acute needs of, of COVID nineteen. So Penny, thank you for that text.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So I see we have, we have, um, an ally on with us. I, I, I noticed, I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but, um, Robert, Robert Calhoun, are you, um, is there something you can share as a, as a brother ally with us that you would, uh, would like us to be able to hear or add to our, um, our data that we are collecting in, in this hearing? Um, or it's always, always a pleasure to.
I just want to shout out, Rob is my colleague at Robbins Kaplan. He works with me, and he's here to support our commission, and I promised him he didn't have to testify, so.
Okay. But you know, I was, you know, I, I'm, I'm always looking to call out someone. But Robert, thank you for being here with us. Thank you so much.
I, I'm happy to join, if you can hear me.
Yes, sir.
I, I'm happy to join, but I, I gotta say, this is my first time joining, and I learned of this through Rebecca. I am somewhat dismayed that, um, I, I might be one of, or, or the only, um, man who has joined. And so I'm, I'm wondering, you know, what, what more can be done so that there's others that, uh, can hear, um, what is going on particularly in the workplace? Um, obviously, COVID has, uh, you know, uh, stricken so many, um, men and women. But at the same time, I do wonder if the fights that are specific to women kind of fall on deaf ears, because no one knows about the work that you're doing or, or other, um, issues that are coming to the forefront.
Wow, thank you, Robert. Thank you for that. And I want to say that even though we reach out to our male allies and to our brothers and our husbands and our fathers and so on, I can honestly say, when we do our hearings, we typically have one or two, um, or three gentlemen that would show up to the hearings. They, they, the fathers or their brothers or, or husbands, and they come and share with us. And so virtually, we've been getting a little bit more, but tonight we only got the one. You know, and we appreciate you one hundred and fifty percent more than all the others that didn't attend tonight, because our topic tonight is an important topic, and it impacts not just women, but men, right? If you have a wife at home, or if you have a daughter that's in the workforce, it impacts them in so many ways. And just you being here and being able to share with others that you attended, what you heard, and how you think that others can be, um, involved with us, please share that with us and share it with Rebecca, because we're always looking for our, um, our male counterparts to be a part of our, our movement and our mission. Thank you so much. And I'm so excited, I didn't say we had testosterone in the room. You guys, I behaved tonight. Thank you, Robert, thank.
We almost got there, we almost got there, Commissioner.
Um, alrighty, uh, I saw someone else that, um, I saw a quick hand raised, I thought I did, hold on. Did I, did we get everyone?
I think we did. I, I don't want to shut it off, but I think we've, we've offered the floor to everyone. We, we certainly are willing to listen to more. Um, uh, but I don't see any other hands, Commissioner.
I think we captured, and again, we, we're still collecting written testimony, video testimony, and recorded testimony. Um, if you, after you log off tonight, if you feel the, the urge and the need, please go ahead. Um, can we drop, uh, into the link, our, um, website, and where they can forward over the information to us? And also drop our Facebook, um, li- um, page into the link also, ladies, so they'll have that. Um, I want to thank everyone for, um, sharing with us, and I am going to turn it over to our Chair of Program and Planning, Jean Fox.
Thank you, Commissioner Tuitt. Thank you, Commissioner Rosetti, and thank you, everyone who provided testimony, and even those who didn't, who came to listen. Robert, you rock. We, we need more of that, we need to continue this dialogue. I believe we've learned an awful lot this evening, uh, because of your willingness to share personal stories and just known stories. Uh, I know that the health one has me very concerned as well. We're deferring health. We're deferring because the, the, the future seems so uncertain, and we don't know if we could buy a chicken wing. There's a lot of unknowns out there right now, and this information will really help us. We add it to the survey, please, if you haven't done the survey, do it, all five languages if you want to. But help us compile the information that we will then take to generate a report, to share with the delegation, the legislative delegation, all legislators, uh, and we will brief them. Um, and this will help, it really affect, hopefully, positive change for all of the women and the girls in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And with that, for closing remarks, I'd actually like to ask Dr. T, uh, to wrap this up, who gave very compelling testimony as well. Dr. T?
Hello, everyone. We just want to say thank you so much for participating. Thank you so much for lending your voice. We really appreciate hearing your lived experiences, because they are shared experiences. We talked about everything from childcare to being a caregiver and re-entry into the workforce and entrepreneurism and, and homelessness and all different things that have, have, uh, impacted us pre and post-COVID. So we wish you well. Thank you so much. Don't forget to fill out the survey if you have not done so already. The link is there. Don't forget to visit, um, the webpage and also the Facebook pages to learn more about MCSW and, um, all that, the work that is done. And also the Worcester County Commission on the Status of Women. We, we're looking for commissioners, so reach out to me. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. T. And please remember that we'll still accept written testimony. That's not closed. So we have, we have an open window on that, and we're gonna take it. Thank you. And I think with that, it's a good night, ladies and gentlemen.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye. This is the after-party. Congratulations, Ed Bye.
We've officially stopped the livestream on Facebook, just letting folks join out. We still have folks admitting, and, um, we have one individual who's in the waiting room, so. Uh, let's see. I guess we can.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for coming.
Hey, yeah.
Reading the comments. Yeah.
Save the chat. Yeah, the chat is saved, right?
Yes, the chat always saves, um, on the backend. So if that's of interest to anyone, please feel free to email us if you need more information, or if you're trying to look for something specific, you're more than welcome to email us at mcsw@mass.gov, and we'll provide any information that you're looking for.
Thank you. We doing a debrief, or is that for another, another time?
Um, I just wanted to check in, because we had someone join, Jorge Calderon, and I know that we just ended. So I just wanted to see if we can give them some context before we close. No? Okay, don't worry. Okay, okay, perfect. All right, y'all, I'm going to officially end the live, uh, end the meeting. So if anybody needs anything else, please let me know. Um, otherwise, thank you so much for taking the time out tonight to join us.